All right. It is 7:00 PM by my watch and phone, so I will go ahead and call the board this regular city council meeting from Monday, August 14, 2023. If we could stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon.
President.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Van Osgood.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
All right, and I am looking for approval of the agenda as submitted unless there's changes. One thing I do want to acknowledge is we do have our new senior center director, Julie Rudd, here. So I would like to be able to give her a moment to introduce herself right after audience participation. Okay.
So move, we accept the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if anybody would like to come forward. All right. Well, then I will ask Julie Rudd to come forward and just share with us real quick.
I'll try to talk as quickly as I can.
You're fine, you're absolutely fine. Thank you for being here this evening.
Oh, you're welcome. I just felt like we needed to get together, get a little update. We had our previous board director just recently resign. She was there for a year and a half. And bless her heart, we made a really good team with one another. She did great activities and events, and I handled the business side. But she was looking for something more full-time, benefits, vacation, the whole thing. And she found it. So she found what she was looking for. And the board had me do interim for 60 days. And at the end of 60 days, they made me the director. So we are currently looking for an activities and events coordinator. If you know anyone, I've got it listed. Let me know.
Great.
Okay?
That's fun.
A couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I did, I don't know if you got, you probably know Ann Lemon, but did you know she's our board president?
Yeah.
And so she tagged along with me. And then we've got a couple of things that I wanted to update on. You know, next year, a couple of the challenges we've got over the next couple of years is next year, we've got the renewal of the millage with you, with Wheatfield and Leroy. And we've worked really, really hard with Williamson Township to get them, I believe we've got their commitment to put it on the ballot. And Locke was the other one that we didn't get on board last time. And we've found a, what I think they'll agree to, it's a subset ballot that just covers where the Williamson schools are. And we can go on that as opposed to going the whole area for Locke. So there's a good chance that that would pass in that smaller subset group. So, and then, and that's next year. And then the following year, 2025, our lease is up in July of 2025 at the Commons Building. I've been looking for a place for, I feel like I was reminded the other day that I've been with the senior center, volunteering, building the website on the board, secretary of the board, getting the millage. So six years, and through that six years, we've been trying to find a site that we could call our own. It'd be our own facility. So I'm working a couple of grants, one with Ingham County. And when we submitted it, I haven't heard anything as of yet, but when we submitted it, we were the only one that had submitted, and there was 1.8 million. And I was notified last week that there are several other people kind of joined in the bandwagon. So I'm not sure where that's going. The other one we haven't submitted yet, it's due the end of August, August 31. And that is actually with Michigan. And that, I could, you know, ask for up to 2.5 million. Don't know, they're asking for a whole lot more in-depth than that one, than just a starting, like the Ingham County was, you know, you get your foot in the door, you get to go to the meetings, and then kind of present further and further and gather the information as you go along. This one is kind of like, give me, you know, give me what you're looking for. But it is specifically for a building. So we're trying for that one, too. So those are my updates. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I do have one question, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm curious why you want to leave the comments if you want to talk about that.
The comments, right now, we don't pay any rent. And if, when the lease expires, we will then have to pay a dollar per square foot.
Okay.
And what, they have us down for, and this is going to sound political. They have us down for 2,400 square feet. And when we measured it out, we had someone come in and measure it out. It's less than that. But the landlord goes from the outside perimeters. And so it would be $2,400 a month. And if we're going to pay $2,400 a month, I'd like it to be our own building.
Okay, I'm going to withhold comments this minute, but I may have a comment on that later.
Okay. Okay.
One more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Curiosity. Would you for sure want to stay in the city of Williamson? Or would one of the townships be an option?
Good question. We would prefer being in the city. But I'm at a point where, six years into this, looking for a place, I'm open to anything. Okay? And I have chatted, believe it or not, with the owner of the antique place that burnt down. He is willing to sell it at some point. He's not in the place to do it right now. But he knows that we would be interested in that. My only challenge there is it's 55 miles an hour. So the seniors would be pulling out onto a 55 mile an hour road. So that's one challenge we've got there.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for your time, you guys.
Feel free to come anytime and share updates.
Okay, you've got it.
That's on your new roll.
And you get all of our meeting minutes, right?
Yep, we do. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we are looking for approval on our council meeting minutes from July 24, 2023, unless there are any changes that need to be made to that.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 24 as submitted.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable for this evening.
I did. It's going to be a little larger than usual just because we paid out some taxes out to individual entities, and it's been a couple of weeks. But everything was pretty, we're in the middle, so there's nothing that I had questions on. So I would make a motion to approve checks 76882 through 76942, and ACH 472 through 502, and EFT 503 for a total of $407,854.64.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have support?
More.
Were there any questions regarding any of the accounts payable this evening? Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Van Osgood.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we'll move right on to our action items for this evening. Our first is the city website overhaul. And we do have a memo in our packet from our city manager, John Hannafin. So I will go ahead and turn this over to him.
Thank you. So, Ed, our city planning, in last March, we talked about refreshing the look of our city website. We did budget for this in our current fiscal year. I'm happy to say we budgeted around 25 grand. And so after discussing these different, the three different companies that are in front of you, and these are, there's a million companies that could do websites. These are the three that probably are most prevalent. But the cost, as you can see, each of the company was well below that $25,000 threshold. So that's good news for us. We did meet with each of the firms digitally and went through a presentation about their sites and their tools, about some of the communities that they work with. All of them are very good. We could easily, I could envision us working with any of the three. Proud City just frankly offered the best price over a three-year time period. One thing I wanted to point out, because it is a little, it probably was a little confusing. Revised had a cheaper annual price, but they required a four- or five-year commitment. And Civic Plus, the two-year, they had a, they didn't require a two-year commitment, or they required a two-year commitment, but each year-over-year was significantly more than Proud City. So Proud City, New Buffalo, Michigan is probably their newest site in Michigan. I looked at it, it's pretty good. I liked it. And all of their platforms are very similar. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but motion's in front of you to select Proud City for the overhaul and update of the city website for the not-to-exceed price of $5,600 with a second-year subscription of $1,800.
All right, I'm going to start with Brandon. He has his hand up, and then I'll move over to Steve. So Brandon, go ahead.
So the, one of the issues with our website currently is that when you go onto the mobile site, if you log into from your phone, it is utterly useless.
That's correct.
So is that something that Proud City is going to address? Are they going to make a mobile-friendly site?
That was item number three on my list of discussion points with each firm, that it has to be mobile. And it also now needs to be ADA compliant. And that's also a feature. Each of those companies offered that.
Okay.
But Proud City had the, I guess, the best, is both of those categories.
Okay, I see. Cool, thank you.
Steve.
Do any of these companies have any tie with Williamson at all?
They do now.
All right, Tom.
My question had to do with the utility services. Right now, if you try, I like to pay my water bill just through the website, but it's super clunky. But I think that's kind of like a secondary attach to the website? Is this going to incorporate that?
It will, absolutely. Yep, yep. And again, it's just, our site serves its purpose very well for a number of years. It's just going to, you know, the technology's not proprietary. It's actually, some of it's open source, which can have some issues with that. But the good news for us, if we tried Proud City out for a couple of years, I think they're going to do great. I think we'll really like them. But if we needed to do this again, it's relatively easy to do that. But there is that module, that's part of that cost, is the ability to do that.
Carrie.
Point three for your interviews was about the mobile compliance of course. What were points one and two?
Excellent question. Price, price was one. And then two was launch. How long would it take to launch?
Okay. So sort of practical questions?
Yeah.
There weren't known problems with the existing thing that you wanted to be sure were fixed?
Those were things that, apart from my discussions with them, I reached out to the communities that they didn't work with.
Okay.
Because some of them, some of these, a couple of these companies do websites for communities that I'm familiar with, city managers, and I just asked them straight up what they thought. And so I got feedback that way.
Good, thank you.
Brandon.
So what is a launch window?
Proud City is 60 days.
Oh, fantastic.
Well, that's assuming, you know, a positive outcome tonight and then meeting with them. And the other thing, too, our site will, the existing site will stay active, and it'll be a very seamless, there'll be some taglines that we're going to be doing this, and there'll be a new website coming. But there won't be any, there won't be a dark period in between old website and new website.
Dan, go ahead, and then I'll, and Scott, if you've got one, we've all had questions. Steve needs to ask a question, but no. Dan, go ahead.
So just curiosity, looking at the differences in price here. Do, let's say, bill pay goes down. Do we have anything built in where within X, they have to respond in X timeframe? Was there any difference in that between the three of them?
There wasn't a big discernible difference. One of the three did not have the best history with that. And Proud City was not one of those.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
My question would be, are they going to provide training for our city staff that will be doing updates through the website?
Yes.
Does this come with customer support for the amount of time that we have them on under contract?
That's correct.
Okay. And then are we limited to the number of landing pages that we have? Because on our current website, we have our page for all of our different boards. We have a page for the PD. We have a page for DPW. So are we limited in that?
We are not.
Okay.
We're limited in the sense that it can't be unlimited, but it's part of the vetting process. Each of them were tasked with looking at our site and making recommendations to improvements. Two of the three did ask, they thought it was, they didn't say it was bad, they thought it was interesting that we have meeting minutes going back to when I had Not Afraid here. So a long time, 50, 30 years. So not that long. So, but we are, based on what we want to roll out, we're going to be, we're going to be able to add things.
Okay.
But come to where near the bandwidth that they're going to provide for us.
Okay. Will it have a calendar of events feature?
Yes.
Okay. And will we be able to pretty easily tie ourselves to our service organizations so that we can promote them? They would be able to give us information? We could share, all that type of good stuff?
Absolutely.
So it'll be a lot more?
And one of the, sorry to interrupt, but one of the features really needs to the three formats, but to give her Proud Cities, is more of a button base.
Okay.
Our current site is still heavily text-based. And you have to use different colors for foot-throughs and links like that. But this will be, and we're only limited by our creativity, by the number of buttons that we have.
Okay.
Probably don't want to have any more than, you know, six to 10 on the homepage.
Sure.
But we'll also be able to cut rate to it. You won't, one of the most common questions I get, partly because of the community development role, is, well, I don't know where your zoning ordinance is. And it is, you can tell on him and I, because we work with it every day.
Right.
But it is two or three clicks away.
Yep.
That'll be one click away.
Fantastic.
Someone will go on our website. And that will help, I mean, I love answering zoning questions, but it'll help if someone just wants to know what the setback is for effects. They'll be able to just click that. And they'll also be able to search that, too.
Okay. And you said it was City of New Buffalo that Proud City has worked on?
Yep.
So I would just suggest to our council members to go out and take a look at the City of New Buffalo, look at their website. And not that we want to inundate John with a lot of ideas, but if we see something on New Buffalo's website that we really, really like, let's, you know, maybe pass that along to John and say, hey, this looks great. Can we do this?
Unfortunately, we can't get, like, Michigan in appearance. And that's about all we can do.
You've got some nice fishing docks, you know?
Just want to shake the expectations.
Uh, red cedar. But all right, thank you so much. Thanks for answering all those questions. Do I appreciate it? If there's no other questions or discussions, I'm looking for that motion.
Make a motion to select Proud City for the overhaul and update of the city website for the not-to-exceed price of $5,600 with a second-year subscription cost of $1,800.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or further discussion, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Van Osgood.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Our next action item is the crossing guard hourly rate. We do have a memo in our packet from our city manager, so I will turn that over to him.
So what we're asking for tonight is a simpler, simple $1 increase for our crossing guards. We have about 1,100 hours of crossing guard time throughout the year split amongst three crossing guards, each about 350 or so each, 350 hours. The base wage hasn't been adjusted in a number of years. They have to see regular small, somewhat cost of living increases. So that's the request tonight. I think they do a great job. It's an invaluable service. It's within our budget model. And as I said, the total budget impact is about 1,100 bucks. And as we, you know, when you drive by the marquee and see that, you know, it's 18 bucks, that we might shift at McDonald's, we want to, we can't pay everybody, you know, a million dollars to do the job here, but we want to be somewhat competitive when we can. And so that's why this is in front of you tonight. Do want to point out, we do need an effective start date. And that would be effective with new school year, which would be next Monday.
Monday, the 21st?
Or August 21st.
And currently, we have three crossing guards?
That's correct.
Okay. So I would be looking for that recommended motion with the first day of the school year of August 21 to be included.
I take the motion to increase the hourly rate of crossing guards by $1 from $14.46 to $15.46 beginning Monday, August 21st.
Thank you so much. Thank you. If there's no other discussion or questions, yes, Scott, go ahead.
So this puts us in line or comparable to other communities?
It does.
All right. Thank you for that question. Yes, Steve.
Who provides instruction, direction, assignment for the guards?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So each crossing guard is required to go through training that's provided. It's a regional training thing. And then ultimately, they work for our police department. So they are direct employees of the city. And then the police chief is their supervisor.
Don't we have input and take that to the chief?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for the motion. Or I mean, I'm sorry, I have a motion. And we had seconds, sorry. Barbara?
Second, listen.
Dan.
Dan, sorry. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Van Osgood.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. On to our third action item. It is the 2023 Utility Improvements Project for the Putnam Construction Engineering Services. We have a memo in our packet from our city engineer, Scott Bree. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Scott.
All right, thank you. And as noted, there is a memo in your packet. The original intent with the Putnam Street construction was that we're going to be doing this with the MDOT work back when it was bid in April. And at that time, there was going to be one construction contract for the engineering portion. Where they do construction administration, that's like shop drawing, review, contract stuff, answer questions, and there's a whole number of things to do on the office end of things. Plus, the field inspection work that has to happen as well with all of the documentation that has to happen of the construction project itself from the engineering company. However, when we had to split the project into two, it actually becomes advantageous for us to split the engineering construction into two different phases or contracts. The first of which being the one The first of which being the one that's attached to the HUD project. We do have a construction engineering portion of the HUD project, but that was dedicated to the Williams and Lloyd and those types of projects. By adding this onto the HUD project, we wanted to add a phase to track this part. The advantageous part is because this is not through MDOT, the level of documentation is a little bit different, and we can see some savings in what they have to do as far as the scope of work from the documentation portion. So we brought this forward to you, construction's getting going, and the construction engineering needs to get going as well. In the end, if we need to attach this with some of the HUD monies, we can also do that as well to answer any budgetary questions. I guess with that, I'll leave it to you for questions.
All right. Questions, Steve?
You just said that it could result in some additional savings. When you look at the $127,000, when I first read that, I'm wondering, wow, what a change. But now with your explanation, we're not going to have to pay as much in the one project side, and we may pay less overall for this project.
Yeah, well, actually, it's not necessarily a change. It's just that the construction phase hadn't been brought for approval yet of the engineering contract. So when you do construction, or any major, large infrastructure project, you have to hire the engineering company to do the design and the bidding portion. There's also another portion that happens during construction that administers the contract, inspects, you know, daily what's going on, works with us, with communications, with the property owners, and so forth. So that normally ranges more than the 8.5% of the construction cost. So that's where I put that note in the memo. You can see that there's some, you know, economy here to the fact that we had planned a little bit more than that for this phase of the job. Does that answer the question?
Dan?
Question. So is there any contingency built into this? Because we know the backend of this project is going to be kind of pushing into early winter. I know it's based on a 90-day work schedule, so let's say we run into weather, we run into things like that. Is there any contingency built into that, or would we be looking at a possible change order?
I can answer that. Yeah, John's here from Spicer, and he'd like to address that.
The job was approximated from iron horses' schedule, eighty-three days. I have seven. I have 90 days in this contract.
All right.
Right now.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Yes, Scott?
Yeah, I should have asked this a long time ago, but this project was split because the bid was 1.4 million higher than we expected. I'm curious if the splitting of the project is resulting in us spending less money, or is it that we're spending the same, but over a longer period of time?
We won't really know for sure until the second project is bid. It is tracking at this point to be less than that 1.4.
Other questions?
On the move that we approved the contract amendment with Spicer Group for professional engineering services during the construction phase of the North Putnam Street Utilities to be added to the 2003 utility improvements HUD projects in the amount of $127,000 not to exceed, meaning the new total contract amount will be $628,100 not to exceed.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or discussion, I'll ask Barb to call the roll, please. Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osbert?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. All right, our last action item of this evening is the 2023 North Putnam Split MDOT Rebid Putnam Design Bidding Engineering Services. And I'll turn this over again to Scott. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, this is where it did cost us a little bit more to split the project because we have to basically prepare two separate bid packages, and the bid package for the MDOT portion, they have to, there are certain things that they have to do. So essentially, this is, this is what it takes to get the thing split into two and rebid into two packages instead of the single.
Okay. All right. Any questions? No questions? I'm looking for this request to action.
Make a motion of approval of the contract amendment with Spicer Group for professional engineering services to split the project and rebid the North Putnam Street Reconstruction Project in the October 2023 MDOT bid letting in the amount of $15,580 not to exceed. The new total contract amount will be $116,775 not to exceed.
Thank you, Dan, for that support. Thank you, Steve. If there's no other questions or discussion, I'll ask Barb to call the roll, please. Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osbert?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lanyon?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for all of the work on our action items this evening. We'll move right down our agenda. We have discussion items. We have our road diet. Do we have any updates on that? I know that now this is being pushed out until next season, so Scott, tell us what you got.
All right. Well, we had a very productive meeting with Tri-County Regional Planning in the last couple of weeks, and they are looking at our request for the funding. I can't guarantee that they'll find it, but they had some ideas. And we should know before the September meeting, it's called the CARTS meeting. I forget what the acronym stands for, but it has to do with our tri-county area here. All the road agencies get together, and that's where decisions are made about funding projects and so forth. So we will know ahead of that meeting because they have to have it on the agenda. And I did also have a lengthy phone conversation with our contacts over at MDOT, and she followed up on a promise that she would look through the MDOT agency access to any of this type of money, and she did confirm with me in an email this morning that they do not have that ability through MDOT directly. It has to go through the MPO or Tri-County Regional Planning if there is something.
Okay.
So we anticipate in September to know the direction that this thing will go. Is it going to bid through the MDOT process because there is financing, or there's grant money available, or is it going to be a city-only project, which we control the schedule? Regardless, it would still be probably the same timing for construction, next construction season, which is the line striping, a little bit of change at the light with the only arrow box that has to hang there, and some signage.
Okay. All right. Questions asked here?
In round figures, what's the total on that?
If it goes through the MDOT process, we had given them a complete estimate of $198,000. If it goes without the MDOT process, it would be less than that.
Great update. So we'll just wait until September, and you can share with us, you know, the outcome of that meeting?
It is worth it, though, if we get the MDOT money, because the extra that you pay is offset by the grant.
All right. So next on our discussion items is a construction project update, and we know that we've talked a lot about everything that's happening, and Putnam kicked off today, so I'll turn that over to John, and he can give us an update.
I'll start, so Scott can pause and get stuff together, so he's got the last three items. So just on the, you know, it's important. Obviously, we have the construction projects starting. We do have the barricades up, and folks are figuring that out. So one of the other elements that we've been working with, been in regular communication with the school district. I know Scott was in communication with some of their folks today, and also with Eagles Club about the possibility of doing some pick-up and drop-off through the Eagles parking lot, and that's really in the hands of the school and Eagles Club, and we'll certainly assist that in any way we can. Anything that we can do to alleviate, you know, whether it's five cars or 50 cars that are part of the normal queuing down there on Riverside and Highland. I do know the school is launching for certain, based on participation of people, subscribe to it. They will have a pick-up and drop-off option at the Commons, and they'll be using the school buses, and that's something the mayor and I had a discussion with Dr. Spooner about that, I think, last November, independent of the construction project. So we are working with the school in that regard. We understand it's going to be some inconvenience, and I know everybody hates that word. They think that we're trying to minimize it. We're not. We know it's going to be a difficult situation. We get that. We're going to do the very best we can during the project. I think we've done a good job of communicating the timing, the new timing of the project, so we had always, we had anticipated this doing earlier than we are now, but this is, this is where we're at. So Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything, or you maybe want to talk about the deployment this week and things that are going to happen?
Yeah, I have a little bit of that information. We learned a little bit more today. The contractor superintendent was able to really dive into the site today, and they are installing, we have to do a dewatering system in that first block because there's enough groundwater that it's a problem for the deep sewer that's going in. So they're going to be installing well points along both sides in the grassy area. That means that there has to be a pipe that has to go along through there, and they have to make accommodations for cars to get over the pipe at the driveways. That's going to discharge between East Riverside and West Riverside into a there's a big bag type of thing that water will seep out of, okay? It's for protecting the waterways and so forth. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's going to be going on in that construction zone, which is why they really don't need the public going into that area. Thursday right now, and this can all change. It's a little bit fluid because that's construction work. Right now, Thursday is the plan for milling up the road surface and getting down to the concrete that's underneath there. So it's, it's pretty pretty aggressive work that has to go on in there, and John Bradley and I spoke this afternoon. His inspector's going to be out tomorrow, and we're going to do a sit-down discussion of what we know about the adjoining property owners in that first block so that it can help with the communication process. I've been in communications with several people already today. Some people very targeted in the North Putnam condo complex. There's 15 units back in there, and so that's a particular challenge of this project because we've got to construct right in front of their main driveway and so forth. So, you know, we're, we're working on our plan to make sure that we're making individual contact as much as possible inside the construction zone, the heavy area where the majority of this is going. They are going to have to come on up through around the project, go around the block, and then back trucks down from the Church Street intersection into the project because the road is so narrow. So it does impact the intersection of Church Street. Some people are questioning why, you know, that's going on. So it's, it's a tricky operation to back trucks down in there. So anyways, that's, that's a little bit of what we know right now, and it keeps evolving as it goes. Towards the end of the week, you know, you'll see really heavy action going on.
Well, I, I think the best thing, you know, that we've learned from this is that communication is so important, and I know that that's going to be key through this project, so, you know, the more we can communicate out if we run into roadblocks, hate to use that pun, but if we do, throughout this process that we are able to put it on our website, put it on our Facebook page. You know, I think we've done a great job of trying to be as positive about this as we can be. It's an improvement that has been very long-awaited, and I'm sure that all of the residents will appreciate it when it's done. They probably will not appreciate it while it's happening, but I think we've done a good job at trying to put our best foot forward, you know, for this, and it's not going to be easy. There probably will be some, you know, you know, we're going to hit something along the way that might back us up, but, you know, we could all, you know, have a moment of silence as we start this, you know. I think that's a big, you know, important, just to stay positive throughout this and try to, you know, direct people's questions to our city staff who can answer them the best. Questions? Brayden?
Just for the record, as you know, I'm a resident of North Putnam. So I've had a couple of things that have been coming my way, so I just want to put it on the record for our viewing audience. One, are residents who are living in North Putnam going to be able to drive in and out of their house throughout the entire project?
The vast majority of times, yes. Now, I say that, but imagine you're digging a 15-foot-deep sewer hole. The trench width is, you know, 15 feet or more in width, well, that goes down the middle of the road. So as that operation moves down the road, and it gets in front of a particular driveway, there's going to be a day or two that that's where our communications with our inspector and the contractor and the contractor working with homeowners saying, hey, we're going to be in front of your house tomorrow. I recommend that you, you know, have a car spotted alternately, type of thing.
Yep. That's the question I've gotten, is whether, like, when we're coming up, are we going to need to move our car, like, sitting in the park? Are we going to get in trouble for leaving our car in the park overnight?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. So.
And then the other question I've gotten is, are services to us going to be, so, like, Pranger comes every Wednesday for our block? So are they going to be able to still get there? Are we going to hold our trash? Like, what's the plan for that?
So we talked with the contractor about that today, and their plan is, as they're working in a particular area, if people bring their dumpsters or their curbies, whatever you want to call them, they'll help locate them at the end of construction so that the garbage service can get to it. Another thing, I know that NISA and the police have also been talking with the site superintendent. He mentioned that today, that he had a good conversation with NISA.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. I actually asked John about that before, before council, just to make sure that we can communicate to the residents that, yes, your trash will be picked up.
If somebody is wanting to get out, it's just good to, you know, get out to your driveway.
Yeah.
Talk to a construction worker and just say, hey, I need to get out. It's best to know a little bit in advance.
Right.
You know, that, hey, I gotta, I gotta leave in 10 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever, and then they'll help.
So I want to tag on to something that Brayden just said with residents and parking their vehicles. Could you be a little bit more clear about that? If, if a resident can't access their driveway, what is the best recommendation to them? As far as side streets, like Church, I mean, you know, we've got residents that live on those streets as well, so Side Street, Riverside, or Church Street, Riverside. What is the best suggestion for residents when they cannot access their driveway?
To some extent, it depends on what they want to do. If they're, if they're not able to get across the river because of where construction is at, and they want to be able to walk to their car and have, not have to drive around the whole, you know, December Road and all that stuff, then it would be better for them to park south of the river in one of the parking lots, but that's a little bit of a walk.
Right.
Or ride your bike or, you know, the type of thing. If that is not conducive, we do know of a couple residents in the construction area that have, like, a really bad hip, you know, that type of thing. So those things we're, we're being very specific with, and if you're, like, in the block right now, north of Church, the active area is not there. You're not going to have too many problems, but once they get into that block, it might be better for you to park to the south on Church Street or up by Bismarck, depending on what direction you're trying to get to in the morning or the evening. So it is going to change a little bit as, as the project progresses and evolves further northward.
Would it be advantageous for residents if they are going to park south of the river that we have them make contact with Williamson Police Department to notify them that, because now we're going to have more vehicles parking in those parking lots? And I would like to make sure that chief and our officers on duty might be patrolling that a little bit more often?
Good care. They should do that. We can also, if they want to contact me, we'll happily facilitate that for them.
Okay.
There's not a lot that we can do, and construction's construction, but I think that we can do. If someone, you know, you know me, I'm a little obsessed with municipal trash collection. If some, if your cart doesn't get picked up, just give me a call. I'll come get it. I'll wheel it down here. Not going to do it every week. I'll come get it. We want to make it easy as, as we reasonably can.
Yeah. And I think that the residents would want just a little bit more peace of mind that if they're parking their car that far away from their home.
They're not going to get it.
That, well, not get a ticket, but also that it's being patrolled because it's not in their own driveway.
Yep.
So whatever we can do to help, you know, mitigate everybody's anxiety throughout this would be fantastic. But I appreciate those updates. Yes, Steve?
Oh, what are the parking locations that the residents can use, and has that been conveyed to them? Like, they have the park. Can they park behind the businesses there?
On the west, on the northwest corner?
Yes.
By Mill Park?
Yes.
Sure. All right.
They, they can, but I would say we prefer if it's, if it's your, you know, everyday driving vehicle, just park in one of the lots in McCormick, either one, because, you know, that way you're not, you're not taking away business spots. And if you're just, because the businesses are arriving, their employees are arriving above their head, and the rest of us are going to work too, so. And we did just resurface and re-stripe and reopen the lots on that corridor.
Yeah.
Both lots in McCormick, and then the smaller lot over at High Street. I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but that, that lot has never, I've never seen a full, a full lot, so.
Right. The one thing I would want to say, too, is we would like our residents to probably avoid the St. Mary's parking lots because school is going to be going back into session for them as well, and we certainly don't want to impede those parents that are dropping off and picking up students over there.
Correct.
Anything else for their projects?
Throughout the contract, the contractor's going to, you know, get ramp set driveways and that type of thing. They anticipate that a lot of times, people are going to be able to get in and out as long as they, you know, work a little bit with them. We don't want traffic running through the contract.
Right.
But, you know, when they're working on, on the south part of the block, people will be able to go around to the north. As they move forward and get past that, then they'll be able to go easier to the south part of the block.
We're in this all together, so, yes, sure.
So are you just okay with the idea of picking up not in front of people's houses? They won't make a fuss about that?
All right. All right. Any other comments or questions for our construction update? All right. Moving along on our, oh, yes, yes, yes. Hi, Brooke.
Hi, Mayor Gilroy. I was just wondering about pedestrian traffic through that construction.
Yep.
Just some clarity and clarity for my neighbors on Riverside and Putnam. Like, if we could just get some clarity, if we can get our, can we walk through there? Can we ride our bikes through there if we're trying to cross the bridge? Or do we need to go 52 or somewhere?
No. Excellent question. Last week, we added to the city website a little diagram to show how the pedestrian safe routes would be, basically. You'll be able to still use both sides of the bridge.
Oh, nice.
And then when you get to West Riverside, there is a crosswalk right there, right next to where one of the road close signs are. And so if somebody's on the west side, they'll be able to cross over to the east side, and then primarily go up the east side and around the corner to East Riverside. People who live in the construction area, they're going to be able to get in and out. We don't want through pedestrians going through there, but if somebody is halfway up the block and they want to, you know, walk to get out of the construction site, they can. The only disruption to that is going to be when they get done with the sewer mains and the water mains. They have to run services to the properties, the individual homes. And when that happens, they'll have to take out one or two flags of concrete for the day that they're doing that work. And it's usually just a day or two, and then they get back up to a subgrade. They're going to put some sort of, you know, gravel hard pack surface in there until they can get some concrete in.
Thanks. All right. Appreciate it. Great question. Yes, can you state your name?
Jordan Davis, resident of Colley Street on the north side.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, obviously, we all are in this together. The Bismarck block off, we've seen a lot of increased traffic through there already, and I wanted to clarify if that was actually going to be blocked off or if that was going to be the main thoroughfare from the school to the north coming down from Williamson, so.
It's, it, as, as construction progresses to the north, it will end up going through the intersection at about 200 feet north of the intersection. Currently, right now, while they're working south of Church Street, there are road close signs up, but people who live in that area are able to go around, just like someone in Church Street has to get out and around.
It's more the school traffic that I'm concerned about when a school starts up, because it's already gridlocked and heavy as can be coming through already, and we've seen angry residents speeding through there all day today. So I don't know if we can do some sort of increased patrols to make sure that, you know, things are calm in that area, but we're, you know, I live right on the corner there, and it's literally every car that's going to come from north to south or wanting to get out from that school, they're going to try and jockey their way through that neighborhood, and obviously, we're in this together, but, you know.
John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. So part of our, our internal, you know, I guess, deployment of things, we did talk about, we know there'll be the need for additional enforcement in a construction area, so we did talk with the police department about that. We can't dedicate a car there for hours and hours, but we will enhance enforcement of that area.
Great.
We'll also be using the school resource officers during pick-up and drop-off time, in particular around the elementary school.
Okay.
So we do have, we do have, I mean, that's an internal staffing thing, but we are, and that was an excellent question about there will be more cars, and there will be different cars cutting through, so we will have enhanced enforcement, and frankly, if people are violating, they'll get a ticket.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that. Appreciate it, Jordan. Any other comments, questions, construction? All right. We did not receive any correspondence, so I will go right down to the department head reports. I know, John, you've talked a lot. Scott, you've talked a lot about our projects and everything, but, but John, what other police do you have for us?
Very unsettled, ready to say keep it short.
Oh, no, I'm still under an hour. You're good.
Police chief search. We've, we've got four applicants so far. 120 views on the Association of Police website, so there's a lot of folks that are, we know that are interested. Again, it only takes one, so I think we'll, we'll definitely have a winning candidate, but we should, should get a few more. Hopefully, a lot more rolling in by the deadline, which is this Friday.
All right.
And then we'll do interviews, right out of schedule. Just talked to the police department this morning about scheduling, and we'll do that the week of the 28th, and like I said, we'll be ready on schedule for that. Do have a DDA meeting tomorrow at a planning commission and a parks committee last week, so our reps can, can report on that. So a lot, a lot of, a lot of things going on.
All right. Great. Thanks so much. Scott, anything else you want to add while I've got you here?
Really quick, you'll notice that crosswalks and stop bars are being freshened up around town. Not every single one, some of the ones that are impacted by either this year's construction or next year's construction, you know, we've kind of watched the penny on that a little bit, but
Sure.
Looking forward to seeing some great crosswalks.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. All right. Moving along, we've got our committee, subcommittee reports. So who would like to share about planning commission?
So planning commission. We did have the individuals who are interested in building on a lot next to the Sunnyside Strip Mall there. They're looking to put in a dollar store facility allocation. Unfortunately, they did not come explicitly prepared for the meeting, and so there's a lot of valid and crucial questions that were raised by the planning committee regarding some of the facets of their whole layout. And so the planning commission tabled that issue for a later date and allowed the applicant to provide additional feedback and thought on their application before we reviewed their final site plan. So and hopefully, the months ahead, they'll, you know, revise their plan to address our concerns, and, you know, we'll review it at that point.
Great. Thanks so much. Other meetings that met that you'd like to share on? Yes, Terry?
Brooks and Rick?
Yes.
Yeah, I was surprised. I found out that the pavilion down here that needs a new roof is 100 years old.
It is.
That was a shocker to me. So, but it's going to get a new roof. There's a new cement thing that's been poured down by the thing down there, so that was going to be a problem, but I guess it just got done. So lots of stuff happening with parks, and all of it is positive.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
What about the trail? Sorry. What about the trail that goes along the river? How's that going? That's going to be, yeah.
Oh, from Mill Park down to the kayak landing?
To the kayak landing. Well, it's, we'd love to see it happen, but there's some questions about getting what.
We have three easements that we still need to get.
Oh, three?
There's still three. No, there's still three. And what is the new concrete pad for down at the kayak?
The bench.
For the bench?
A bench and a kiosk.
And a rack? Or, oh, the kiosk. Okay. All right. No, it's great to see, but yes, that's been active conversations about how can we convince these three property owners to grant an easement, but, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress, and hopefully, we'll be able to make those connections soon. Any other committees that met? NISA?
We had a NISA meeting. There wasn't a ton of significance to report. I guess probably the most exciting thing I took from it is they're at least entertaining the idea of bringing back some of the old events that went away recently, such as, like, ox roast, ox roast and pancake breakfast, so. Those things may be making a return in the somewhat near future.
The pancakes are always better when they come from the fire department, so that should come back.
With lots of help from the police council.
Yeah. And the bacon, the bacon's exceptionally good, too. All right. Anyone else have meetings that they want to? All right. Moving along, we've got another opportunity for our audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation, if there's anybody that would like to come forward. would like to come forward. All right. Council member comments, I'll start with Dan.
So I'm just going to touch on Putnam Street real quick. This, you know, we're just getting started here, and everybody, everybody's worried, school traffic's going through there. A lot of the residents that live there have a lot going on until it's done. But the goal of this at the end is that we're going to have a nice road through there, and those residents are going to have much improved water. And the hope is, having sat here for a few years now and hearing about the residents that come in with the jars of brown water that they don't want to have to wash their clothes in, and they don't want to have to get expensive filters and things like that to be able to give their kids the water, that's the goal here. And when that, when the bid came back, a million and a half over budget in the spring, we had to figure out what we were going to do, because that's, that wasn't something we could just absorb, because that means another street that we had funding for, that we could do these same upgrades on, couldn't, couldn't have it if we, if we accept that, if we accept that overage. So yes, it got all this, all this pushed back, but hopefully at the end of all this, all this inconvenience, all these straws and eggs that we're going through right now, those residents are going to have much better water, and hopefully, hopefully, money better for them.
All right, thanks, Dan. Scott?
No comment.
All right, Brandon?
Just briefly, I would echo what Dan said. As a North Putnam resident, I would ask that you ride it out with me. I'm along for the ride with you. If you have questions or concerns or complaints or anything, please come see me. I'm at 620 Putnam. So just come complain at my door, I'm happy to hear you, and I will take that directly to the city manager. But yeah, I mean, it's going to be a pain for all of us, but we're just going to have to ride it out together, and hopefully we can have better roads and better water soon, so.
Thank you. Steve?
National Night Out.
Yes.
Chief's not here. Has anybody got a report on that? I know I went down to the...
Volunteer's Park.
Yeah, volunteer park, and that seemed to be not much traffic.
I will say that my son thoroughly enjoyed National Night Out.
Okay.
He got a ton of pictures inside a fire truck, inside an ambulance, inside a cop car, so it was like the best day of his life.
Okay, good.
So he loved...
It's hardly approved.
Yeah, it's hardly approved. So he loved National Night Out. But I, I do know that, yeah, there was light traffic this year, but he did love it when he went.
And that was something that they were doing, this was new. Normally, years prior to COVID, it's always been in McCormick Park, and I've been a part of it when I was a reserve officer, and it's a fabulous event. COVID kind of put, you know, a damper on a lot of things, like the different NISA events that are held. So this year, you know, they tried two different locations, a north and a south side. I'm sure that they will evaluate that and see if that's something they'll try again next year, or whether it'll just all go back to McCormick in one location. But I'm sure when chief is here, he'll, he'll provide us with that update. They usually will try to estimate how many people have come, who participated, as far as, you know, providing different activities in the locations and everything. So Dan, did you have a comment about National Night Out?
I was just going to say, my kids had the, had the same experience, thoroughly enjoyed it. We didn't make it over to volunteers, but we came over to McCormick Park, and the reserves were well represented, and we had some other officers down there. They got treats, and the NISA was down there, patrol cars, and everyone was having a good time.
Excellent.
I have another comment about what has been talked about here tonight, and has been going on for a long time, as far as the construction. It's very frustrating for me as a citizen of Williamson, knowing what city council has done, knowing what the city manager has done, and knowing what the staff has done, and trying to communicate in as many venues as we can about what's going on in Williamson, specifically about this project. And it just pains me to watch on Facebook and hear all of the charges, claims, misinformation, and so I'd encourage anyone that has any question, please contact the city manager. He has been wonderful along with the staff to provide any information, answer any questions that we have. So please take that, tell everyone that you have, if you hear them, comment, say, call City Hall, go to the website, the information is there. It's just frustrating that everyone's not hearing and sending it.
Yeah, thank you. Terry?
Yeah, two things. I'm sure no project schedule survives contact with realities. So bravo zulu to you for going with the flow and figuring out a new way and doing all the detailed stuff in between, okay? That's number one. Number two, I'm looking forward to an ox roast. I've never been to an ox roast, so I'm ready for an ox roast.
No. Food, food always gets a vote.
Yes.
All right, Tom?
I think it was pretty well covered, nothing for me.
All right. I just want to say thank you so much to our entire city staff, our engineer services. We couldn't do this without everybody really rolling up sleeves and making sure that every i is dotted, every t is crossed. If you've read my Facebook post, as mayor, I've tried to share as much as possible regarding these construction events, and, you know, we hope for the best, we prepare for the worst. I've known Scott long enough that we don't say certain things, words during winter, like water mains and stuff, that we just had a water main break, and you guys handled it so well, because when I was driving to the airport at 5:00 AM in the morning, you guys were out there fixing it. There's a lot of behind the scenes that I don't think our residents see. So it's very easy for them to jump to assumption and not be on that right path. So, you know, as I've said, every single council meeting, I post on our city, you know, sharing city information from the city Facebook page to my own, and I know my council members do the same. Contact City Hall if you have questions. Come to a meeting. Our calendar is on our website, our council meetings are the second and fourth of the month. You are welcome to walk in this door. Don't be afraid if you have a question. That's why we're here, that's why you voted us here, to keep moving this community forward and for us to be progressive and not go backwards. Just like Brandon said, he's a resident, he's going through it with you. Dan and I are residents of William Street. We will be going through it with you next year, so we feel the pain as well as the rest of you. So I just, again, I can't say thank you enough to our staff for all that they do to put these projects forward and execute them, and we will go through this together. It's August, school starts next week, so please be mindful of school traffic, please be mindful of construction traffic, please have grace and patience for your neighbors and for your community, because without that, we're not going to be able to do this and get through it. So I just hope that everybody enjoys this last week before school starts, enjoy this last month before fall is upon us, because I always say that September kicks off fall. But there's still some great activities that are happening throughout our community, so I hope that you all enjoy. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn at 7:58.